Thank you, Councilor. And we'll call it five here, of course. I understand this whole thing, I really do. I still don't understand why we can't have two lines there, not three. I just don't... It don't seem like it's gonna... I don't see that speeding up anything any faster, I really don't. Especially today. Anyone under thirty probably is never even gonna touch a kiosk. They don't wanna put their fingers on it, they're afraid of germ bugs. No, I'm serious, it's like bizarre. It's not... They use their phones, that's their life. They pay with their phones. They won't touch nothing, it's just bing, 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 bing. It's like, I'm with my kids, they're great. It just freaks me out that they can do on their phones. They don't carry money.
Can't call people.
Yeah, don't know how to call back, that's what's going on. You get texts and emails, you don't even like to talk no more on the phone. But, uh... And I understand it's gonna be a test here. I'm just wondering if we can come up with something a little better with the Q and system. And all that parking right here, to me, is a waste. To me, it is. I don't see people... You see people parking on the side here, running in and running out. I don't see people parking... I just don't see many people that park in the donors myself. I just, they drive. They just don't wanna get out of the car. The young kids don't wanna use money, so that third lane will be flying, I believe. And it's a pass through too, so... I don't know, I think there's an opportunity to make this good for everybody. I really do that we can make this... Pull that up and move that parking lot back. It's just... And put an eight-foot fence up there, and it'd be a great business. And it's the same exact thing. If you need the three lanes, you can have the three lanes. You've still got the Q one, you've still got... Those two lanes are gonna fly. That right lane's probably just gonna be... There'll be more people in the right lane in six months, three months, than there is in those other two lanes. People are gonna order on their phone, they're getting their car, they're gonna push the button, bing. And their coffee's waiting for them to come to the donors over the bridge, so... I think we can... That's just my two cents.
My... Just... An objection, Matt. I didn't understand from the project. So are you saying twelve through seventeen move to the back? Or are you saying all, that whole area move to the back instead of right?
No, twelve through seventeen, not the whole. Right behind the building, you wanna go in that way.
Yeah, 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 okay.
But the rest of them, those space could be over there. They could queue in.
Okay.
Or they could even put those space over there, 'cause no one's gonna park way back there unless you're an employee. No one's gonna... Those... And there's probably not more than five or six employees anyway, I would say. Maybe, I don't know. How many employees do you have in the morning?
Probably about eight.
Eight?
Eight.
Two of them are gonna drive together, right? Three, six... Yeah, so you take two spaces there, still spaces there, they park... Better than some of the other retail.
So give us... If there's something else going to...
Then good. Put those, all those spaces in the back, and let all the employees park in the back. Cue that up even. So, look at the space they have here. Look at the space they have in the back. We could just put those spaces in the back. Bring that queue right in, and you can turn around like that, and then... You really could. And put all the employees parked in the back. They're way... The neighbors, they're... Put an eight-foot fence up there, everybody's happy. You get your three lanes or four lanes, whatever you gotta have. The Q one's a little less on this side, but... You know, how far would you really have to go up? And put those parking spaces along the back of the fence? Councilor?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Yeah, I'll show you one with half.
All I can tell you is I've been before this board a number of times, and I've been before the licensing board a number of times, on drive-throughs. With Dunkin' Donuts especially. The last thing I've ever heard is to make the queue shorter.
That's what I was thinking.
So the concern about, and I'm just...
I'm not saying it's gonna be that much shorter. It's not, it's really not. So how you doing it's taking...
Taking the rates a lot.
You're taking some of the, really, the good stuff on the lot. You're making a parking space in the back, and getting rid of those, and moving it up maybe a car length. A car length, max. You move that whole thing up one car length, because of the distance that you have there already, and put parking in the back. If that's what the neighbors want, that's what they should get. They should try to get back this way a little more. How high would that be? Rock with that hand? One more hand? You still got the same thing.
This is really something, yeah, that would have to be reviewed by the professionals, to see if the turning radius would be appropriate, and how it could be designed. They thought about this for quite a while before they presented these plans. And the goal was really to create that type of turning radius to allow the drive-through as it's designed now. I mean, if you certainly look at other designs, I think that... I'm not sure that we're looking at what you're hoping, which is to bring the drive-through kind of through here with...
No, no, I'm not saying that at all. I'm not saying all that way up, no. Just take those spaces in back, bring this up a little bit. You still got that Q one right there, but the parking in the back row.
Yeah.
You still got parking in the back. You still got all your four lanes. You're moving it up maybe about eighteen feet or something, sixteen feet.
So, thirteen, seventeen?
Yeah, move those back. So you take those spaces, and you get, put the spaces in the back, so the employees can park in the back. Just kinda queue that up a little bit. You're still gonna have almost the same queue, if not more. There's not more when you're three or up further.
So what that would do, and I think I understand, is it will reduce the queue by about eighteen feet, because we're taking eighteen. So that's a single car length, so I understand that. I'm not sure that by moving everything forward by only one car length, that there's a significant benefit to the neighbors, because it's still a long... You know, we're just moving it this way only eighteen feet.
You know what a good thing is? You got all your employees from parking the back. You know where they're parked. They're in the back, and they're really, they're out of the way. Why would you want your employees parked like time properly? Why would you want them right up front? I wouldn't. I own that business, I want my employees in the back of the lot.
Well, the employees would certainly have...
Fence there, so no one's gonna see their car. There's no lights on, the further away from the building.
Well, I think we'd have to look at the site geometry to see if...
If, I'm just saying, if it's possible. If it ain't, it might not be.
I'm not sure that there's a significant benefit only moving it up eighteen feet to these...
Twenty foot less, the speakers near the house is all... Three feet's a difference. Go stand twenty feet behind the car, stand another car length behind. You hear a lot less.
It'd be twenty feet closer to this lot, it'd be twenty feet further from that lot.
Yeah, and it'd be twenty, twenty feet back from the further... Three quarters of it would be twenty away, right? I just think it's doable. If it ain't, it ain't, but if it is, why not have the employees parked in the back a lot? And you know, you know... The Q one is... My whole thing is about lights, too. And if you can have more, three lanes up here with three cars, further up, instead of just three cars, might... If it's further up, you might get six cars there, two in each lane, which would queue it better than where it is there. So if you're coming in, and you have one in each lane, you might be able to have two in each lane before the kiosk. So you could probably queue two or three more than you can now with the single lane, you'd have a double lane there.
There is an advantage to not doing that. That is, as the car stack here, as a lane frees up, I make the decision to go to that lane. If I load all of these lanes, and we get the guest that decides to order eighteen sandwiches, he's gonna be held there until that order is basically ready to be received as a pickup. So we'd like to keep the queue here, so that we can balance not overloading...
Big red light is on, it's him?
We probably won't use lights, but that is the idea of balancing the traffic load.
I had an idea what you said, I didn't think of that, you're right.
So from our perspective, this is more optimized. I'm not sure that moving it forward, it helps this guy a little bit, but it doesn't significantly impact these other residential properties.
I don't know either. There's nobody gonna order eighteen sandwiches from a kiosk. If you're gonna do that, you're gonna sit at the window, or are you gonna... Use a mobile guy, you know what I mean? Nobody's gonna sit there.
Mobile guy won't do that. All right, maybe six.
I mean, I personally, I hated drive-throughs until I had a child. Now I drive from swarm to hub neck to go get a coffee sometimes. So, I think if you look at kind of an optimal, we've seen a bunch of these, if you look at an optimal spot, and the block is an optimal spot, obviously, it's at the disruption of the neighborhood. So, I think anything that we could potentially consider to try and minimize the effects on them is worth taking a shot at, and seeing what it would do in terms of... If it cuts your car down by one length, I understand what you're saying. But you're not gonna live there, you people, honestly. So, if we can get an extra fifteen feet, that matters, you know? An extra five feet probably matters. Every little bit we can do helps. So, I think the opportunity to take a peek at it is not gonna hurt anybody. I don't think you're hearing the board saying, you know, they're against it by any way, but it's just, you know, if we can try and find something and see if it works.
It's something we've had to work on.
And I mean, obviously, you're gonna have a nice vegetation plan. It sounds like you got a great fortress, and it's gonna do everything it can to, you know, minimize the impact on your neighborhood, you know? And I know that's nice to hear, but, you know, I'm sure for a councilman for him to say that about somebody down here, it should ring true, you know? So it sounds like he's gonna do the right thing no matter what. If it's an issue, you know, with your street six months' time, they can readjust something, show it something he would, you know, consider helping.
I think.
Yeah, well, he has seven, too.
He would.
Yeah, we should.
Okay. Any others?
Generally... I'm opposed to drive-throughs in general because of the, what they cost. What's strong for me for a loop there is the technology. And how the technology helps speed the customers through. And instead of seventeen, they only need fifteen to queue. You know what I'm saying? It's, that's, so it's a... It could work one way or the other. I would think... I would think that the idea of the technology is to move everybody through quicker and safer. That's the way that I'm looking at it. I understand the neighbors' issues about the fence, that's a given. The issue I have is if we move the parking to the back, that we lose the landscape.
Yeah, you can lose some.
You know? And that itself is a buffer. You know, a noise buffer and a light buffer. If they move, if it's tall enough stuff that they put in, you know, to match the fence on it, get a little higher by it. I think in general, I'm comfortable with it, don't... I just wish I had some fourteen-year-old to explain the technology.
I think that was a simulation that I saw, video game for us.
It's technology.
On one hand, I think it's exciting using the new technology. I think three lanes probably require it. I only question whether adding eighteen feet here and then penalizing the opposite side by eight feet, you know, does it equal out? Or would we take back from the amount of landscaping here by moving this?
And you're getting closer to the... You are getting closer to those other neighbors right there, if you're gonna be moved up. It gives it closer to this, too.
And it's not something that we can make a site visit somewhere else to see if it worked.
Oh, no, we change it, and you just can't change it.
The goal is to get lights. The goal is to allow vehicles to turn, so the lights, so the lights are off the homes as well. You know, by shortening the queue, you have cars in a queue.
Like, you know, if you did what I said, what I'm thinking, you would be short in the queue, you'd be adding two paths to the queue.
No, no, I'm saying, while they're in the queue, maybe they're facing the...
Take an eight-foot fence over there.
We can certainly look at, see if we can modify it, I'm just not sure which is better. I think that there's a lot of thought put into this design.
I know this is a reach, but tell us how long you expect a customer to actually be on the site that's gonna drive through? You know, I mean, from the time he enters the site, no matter where he goes, if he goes to the window, or if he goes to the...
He's noble, if he's already on, it'd be fast.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, is there some way that you can come through?
Just a regular guy.
Ballpark.
Regular guy that's gonna use the kiosk, punch in your coffee in there.
Well, the typical guest would be expected to be around two and a half minutes through traditional ordering. The other guest that we'd wanna consider for this particular site is that guest that's really pulling in, he's already ordered. His time just has to be less, so it's a little difficult for us to...
Yeah.
Not sure what kind of an average we could offer. Less than two and a half.
Okay, thank you. That's good, thank you.
You're welcome.
That is cool as a guy with the eighteen sandwiches, right?
Not yet.
He's going inside.
As long as he pre-owned, it'd be great. Hello, what do you want to do, guys?
What?
Oh, I thought you already spoke, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Vice General. Beth?
I think we really should get this over with, go on today, and go with this plan, 'cause I think this plan is interesting, and I think that... They know, they've been playing with this for a while, with just asking to replay. I think I favor this, I mean, it is.
With the fence?
With an eight-foot fence.
Is the eight-foot fence going all around this property?
It's a piece on the back, it's be landscaping.
Well, what about these? The lights coming over, I want an eight-foot fence on that left side all the way down.
Okay.
I mean, that's where the lights come around, right hand to back. That's where the, it's gonna shine, that's where it's gonna shine. Both sides?
Yeah.
All right, make the motion. What do you want?
Oh, okay. Mr. Chairman, Adam, Z seventeen dash eighty, Dunkin' Donuts, aim for a special permit variance finding. Over the Dunkin' Donuts, solely occupy approximately two thousand one hundred square feet, existing building on the premises number five eighty-two Washington Street. I make a motion to grant the special permit variance and finding with an eight-foot fence going around the property.
How much around the property?
Two sides.
Two sides.
What about the back? The back?
Back, back on the side.
All back on the left side. Facing the property, then re-up on the left side, so when the lights come around. Seconded?
Seconded.
On the motion, seen that, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you very much.
We're gonna take five minutes. We can get back case none of the business, case number Z seventeen seventy-seven. Thousand penny for man, to legalize the porch, lower addition from his seven-nine. Ham and Court. The African representative here. Please come forward, state name and address for the record.
My name's Frank, I live at Manhattan Court, traveling down the sun, case I need any clarification.
What's your name? Name is Bonnie.
Address?
Name, Ham and Court.
Okay, tell us what you'd like to do, why you're here.
Oh, it's June. The house that we're living was a two-bedroom apartment, and at the time, both the kids were young. And as the time went by, the kids, one, the oldest one, was ready to go to college, and they needed some space and privacy. So we thought that two bedrooms were not enough, and we loved to have additional bedroom to the house. My husband was brought in around for a constructor, and we believed at the time that it's on our price, it fits our budget, and we kind of talked to him about the numbers, and... We together went, or I believe that originally the plan was for the... Whatever the plan was, it was denied for the first time, because he had included a deck which had the same area space, so the deck was going to be underneath the bedroom. That was denied. So we had no idea that this is what the plan was, so we went all three together to the zoning board, and then we said that all we need is the addition of the bedroom. And we were allowed to do that with the reason that the parking spot, which was one parking spot, to not be touched. And this is why we were granted the permit. And the tragedy started, we had trouble at the beginning. He was very slow. He did not complete the bedroom. He had the frames, and I believe that he, in a letter that he responded to the Better Business Bureau. What happened is that after he built it partially, the bedroom, after we came from work, we just saw that there was a deck, which he has no, our permission, and we have no clue why he kept us on a dark. We have no idea. And the inspector came the next day, he didn't even approach, because he said this wasn't supposed to be there. So we called the inspector, and I told him, we have no idea why we built a deck. His response was that, I had too much material, and I didn't know what to do with them. And I said that, but the deck is not even in the plan. So I wrote a letter to the Better Business, actually to the Martha Coffee, because we wanted him now to resolve the problem, and to make the space, whatever he built, based upon what we agree. He never responded. Actually, he did respond to the Better Business Bureau for whatever the excuses were, and then he said that, I'm not going to have any business with them, and we just went to the zoning board, and we fired him, and we...
We went to the zoning board?
Yeah.
A building, building, yeah.
And we fired the constructor. We fought so hard for him to come back, and at the time, we were not able to hire anyone, because he did not reimburse for the money and for the job that he did not complete. And we were looking around, and at the time, with my, our sons in college, it was a hardship for us, and to remove and then do something was around seventy-five thousand dollars, and at the time, we did not have that. So, okay, you can just...
Let me basically break it down for you folks, simply, without all the pauses and interruptions, you know, a little bit of language there. So initially, my parents, they came here in ninety-six, didn't have much, they started up, you know, they had me and my oldest son, they came here, worked hard, bought a house. Again, as we grew older, we shared a room. Eventually, he had to do a lot of late work in high school and preparing for college, a lot of late work, late at night. I being younger, able to sleep, so they decided to make the bedroom, again, the original plan, they get that at first, they said, you can't do the deck perfectly okay. They came back, they fixed that, they were only gonna do the bedroom on top. I don't know if you guys have pictures, but they were only gonna do the bedroom on top, on the stills, or whatever you wanna call it. And long story short, they came home from work one day, and exactly as how my mother described it, they had found the foundation, or, you know, the better part of the porch underneath. And when they had asked them about it, again, they got that response that, oh, I had all these materials, I didn't know what to do with. Well, first off, his own fault in purchasing extra material, anything, sell it back. You know, so now they have this porch there, that again is illegal, and that they were told was illegal. They have, they contacted them numerous times to have him come back and take this porch down, which he had built on his own board without consulting them, or whatever boards he needed to consult. They have contacted them multiple times, they wrote to the Better Business Bureau, they wrote to the, even going so far as to the attorney general, Martha Kopey at the time. They have all those letters. He never responded to them. He did respond to the Better Business Bureau by saying, oh, we have no business with them anymore. He wouldn't get in touch with them for weeks, months, and again, at the time, sending my brother to college, they paid for that.
All right, you have an addition in the back, correct?
Right.
Up and down?
Yes, it was only supposed to be up.
Well, this, I have the building, Carl, two old stuff. And it says that you wanna remove existing deck, replace it with a proposed addition to give the family more living space.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
You're saying it's only supposed to be the top of the building, not the bottom?
Yes, and when they came home one day, they found...
And the deck was on the bottom?
Yep.
And no one could take it off or fix it or whatever, so you ended up closing that in?
No, so what happened was, again, they had contacted, this should have been his problem. He put that there without consultation with my parents.
So you're in the jam, so what happened?
So, again, sending my brother to college, raising me at the same time.
Let's get to the house, the house, the house, the second floor building.
Well, yes, it's a monetary, it's a monetary problem without getting it removed.
All right.
They're gonna find, if they had to find something...
I get, I get that. I get that, really, if you keep going back, it's gonna be a long way.
But it didn't close.
So I wanna know this, you had the top, and you had it locked down. What happened down there?
One more to the time. The question, so why we closed it? It was due to the attorney there of the property.
Like, you never got a permit to close downstairs, correct?
They told, they told us that we have a permit for both.
Oh, okay.
So...
Go ahead.
They told us we have a permit for both.
All right, so you closed it in.
When the inspector came, he says, no, 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 we have a permit for upstairs. But at the time, two thousand seven, we arrived here in nineteen ninety-six.
All right, now it's built.
Yeah.
You built it?
No, he built it.
Who finished it?
I finished it.
That's all, okay.
Today, tomorrow, a little bit by...
I get it, I get it.
Five years.
You ran out of money, there's no money.
It took me five years to build that.
Okay, but you finished...
Not spending seven thousand to...
I get it, I get it.
Remove it to get the other one.
I get it.
But spending a hundred and hundred.
So you took out your deck, and you wanna replace it with an addition. And the guy screwed?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, essentially.
So you finished your house?
Yes, and since then, no neighbor complains, nothing?
Yeah.
We didn't have any complaint, actually.
Here's my only thing. If that wasn't paid for, for the second deck on the bottom, Mr. Duka, go down to see him. I think let him go down to Mr. Duka, if the permit was done, haven't inspected. Make it right. It's all right, you can approve it tonight. And then just Mr. Duka, make sure if there's anything, not at all find outstanding, if there's any permit fees that weren't.
Yeah.
It is there, it's built, they lived there, we'll be here all night arguing how, what happened, you know? You have a motion, and well, let me finish this first. All right, thank you, you can have a seat. Does anyone wanna speak in favor? Anyone wanna speak in favor? First cause, I call third call, no. We have a letter here that's from the building department, they dispute the above referenced project, they have no comments. Can I put those in the folder? Can I keep those?
Yeah. I do have the letters that we have from...
Your way ahead again, your way ahead again. Anyone? Anyone wanna speak in favor? No? Anyone wanna speak opposed? Press the second, third call. I think that's fair enough.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
It looks nice, it's a pretty house.
Man, Z seventeen seventy-seven, zero penny.
Very.
Variance to legalize the porch, lower level addition on the premises number seven dash nine, having court. Make a motion to grant the variance on it, the building inspector is satisfied, approves the construction as they have.
Seconded?
Seconded.
On the motion, seen that, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Thank you. I want you all to go to building department. See Mr. Duka, all right?
This way, that way.
That way.
That way, have a good night. But see Mr. Duka.
You're so much of a good night.
Thank you, have a good night.
You as well.
Further on tonight, Z seventeen seventy-eight, Judy Chandler, fine, in Santa Russian, in the retail area, the property in premise number six sixty-three sixty-eighty-one, Hancock trees, the African representative here. Anyone?
No.
No one's here?
No.
All right, who will go? Z seventeen seventy-nine, Robert Conley, manager, one seventy-six Willard Street LLC, for variance, renew the existing parking, traditional parking, on one seventy-six Willard Street. The African representative here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Rob Fleming, from Fleming and Fleming. Thank you for having us this evening. I do represent Mr. and Mrs. Conley concerning the property of the one seventy-six Willard Street in West Clinton. They are here this evening as well, if you have any questions. They are here this evening as well, if you have any questions for them. David, apparently from Russian Math is here as well. I'll get you to where Russian Math comes into play here. So the property itself is, again, 176 Willard Street, the corner of Rogers and Willard. It's 16,552 approximately square foot lot in a business fee zoning district. Currently approved by a two-story commercial building. This building was built by right back in the late 90s. Big part of the problem over the years is that the uses of the building itself have changed over that period of time, the number of uses. A repo graphics company had built it for their use at the beginning. Mr. and Mrs. Conley, who owned once, owned a vet clinic right on Willard Street. Initially, they, they were a few doors down on Willard Street. Relocated and purchased this property back in 2006, 2007. Second floor of the property was occupied by the repo graphics company for some years. Stella Myers had come in for a few years as well. That was the old nursing home in South Austin. I'm a seller, you have to... But 2012 is when they occupied. Since that date, the second floor of this building, which encompasses approximately about 3,500 square feet, thereabouts, has, again, remained vacant since 2012, despite numerous efforts to re-rent it. Most recently, half the space on the second floor, approximately 1,700 square feet. The Russian School of Mathematics here in Commonwealth, operated about 15 schools. And they were, they started back in 1997. They are intending to lease about 17 square feet of that second floor space. It's important for me to point out, on this particular site, when it was built, there are 14 parking spaces. For the veterinary clinic, as well as Russian math, the parking is essentially meets the requirement for those two uses. I met with Mr. Duka on several occasions to discuss it with him. Again, there's about 1,775 square feet of space that has not been leased yet on the second floor, nor has been marketed at this point. Mr. Duka felt inappropriate that I appear before this board to request relief for somewhat reconfiguring of the parking. The 14 spaces are to the rear of the property. They're about a 10-foot setback from the property line. The colonies are requesting those be pushed back somewhat, an average of three to five feet to the rear of the property. They're also requesting relief to add five additional spaces on the side of the building, which fronts Roger Street. And that's both of those are in your plan. Those, both are violations of the setback requirement in a business fee zoning district, which is 10 feet setback.
So it's eight, extra spaces?
That's correct. So 14 now. It's actually 24, 25 spaces, being the total layout.
25, all right. Oh, I see, 1, 2, 3, 7, 8, 11?
Yeah, there's some additional that would be parallel to the rear of the building as well. So pushing those 14 spaces back allows for that with respect to turn of radius. So important for the Russian School of Mathematics and their operations. It's a, if you don't know it at all, they are primarily during the week begin their classes at 3:00 P.M. This is all after school for children ranging from kindergarten right through 12th grade. Most of their clientele, most of their clients are, you know, under 16 years of age, you know, right through, you know, probably junior and...
And they'll be dropped off?
Yeah, and, and good point, Mr. Chairman. That is all drop off. That is their practice. These kids are dropped off for an hour and a half, hour fifteen, hour and a half, hour forty-five. Parents are not allowed to stay on site.
Good.
So, yeah, so on the property itself, which doesn't exist today, is a secondary means of begrass driveway from the property. It's about 15 feet wide back on to Willard Street. This will allow, you know, the clients come, the parents come, drop their children off in the rear of the parking lot. Staff members from Russian Math will see the children into the building and elevator up to the second floor. With respect to Mr. and Mrs. Conley's veterinary practice, at any one time, you're looking at five to six employees on site at any one time. Their hours of operation, Monday through Saturday, different hours, typically open, I think last appointment would be probably 7:00, 7:30. So we don't see any real conflicts in that respect. So we feel this, this will work. The biggest thing is classifying, you know, the uses here, you know. The vet clinic is classified as office space, which will dictate how many spaces are required. The school is a private school, it is institutional. Again, that requires so many spaces as well. And important to consider is drop off as well. The vacant space that has not been leased yet, nor are there any, you know, proposed tenants for that particular space, 1,775 square feet. If you use the most restrictive, you know, which would be 200 square feet, it's a retail, which I don't see the second floor space being a great retail space. But we'll apply that. They're pretty close to meeting the parking requirement for those three particular tenants. But we are requesting some relief in that respect as well, a few spaces. So, in a nutshell...
It just seems like all the grass is gone, except for the front of the building.
Yeah, certainly this good landscape in the front, there is on that side of the building. They still will be able to maintain a really good buffer between the parking lots that were pushed back in the rear of the site existing and those property owners right behind. That will, we're still looking at probably three to five feet of space there that will be a good buffer between...
In the middle?
Yeah. In the rear, yeah.
Okay, in the rear?
It, it varies how much space there is available. But we feel enough to, to maintain some of that vegetation and absolutely the fence, you know...
You gotta start getting fence on it, right?
Yeah, and that may have to be displaced a little further back. You know, we did, I did speak with Council Palabuchi as well. He didn't see any real issues with this. Mr. and Mrs. Conley have been business owners here in the Quincy community, you know, very involved in the Quincy community as well for, for years and years. I assisted him in, in starting another business on Willard Street some years ago. And that's when they had, around the same time they had moved their practice, that practice to this facility.
And they're saying, you know, we're taking out, like, everything. It's like, you didn't leave the grass on this side, you can leave the grass in the front, you could add one, two, three, four, five spaces here. Have an exit here, but you're taking, you know, everything. It's like, we're paying for the city.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a difficult problem. You know, and I, I talked to Sean Allen, who actually built it for repo graphics back in 97, 98, you know, and it was for their use. And the parking really wasn't needed so much for that particular business, you know. So again, it was a byright, you know, construction building. And because of the uses, and it should have been foreseen, I guess, during the years, but it creates a problem with the colonies. So they, they are, again, they're trying to maximize the parking.
If, if, yeah, yeah. You take out those three spaces here.
The parallel?
Yeah, I mean, and you still got your drive-through. You could take the drive-through. I mean, I think everyone, like, to get out of the property, you know, better for everything, get in and out. But, and add these, but leave that corner grass in the corner. You know what I mean? It's, it's a spot and hot for...
On Roger Street?
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, you get a little corner spot to leave, and you get the access here, and the front space here. Leave that and leave some grass, some grass out in the back. So if you've only taken out three spaces, you're still getting, like, an extra six, or five, or six, plus you get your exit, taking out all that grass. You got one, two, three, five extras there. Leave a little grass here, take one spot, right? And leave one spot, leave some grass over there, nice...
At the entrance way?
Yeah, over this side, so when they come in, they're going past the grass. You see some grass on this place. And I don't think that's a lot for myself.
No, I'm concerned about the good head over there, it's gonna have a runoff now and how we capture that water instead.
It's just an all, you know?
It's a, if we listen to the chair, we're gonna have some grass in there.
So leave the front, take out this, your five space, leave that. Now they still, still got all them spaces. Don't add those three here, leave some grass in. Now you've got your whole exit, so you're gaining, you're gaining five, six spaces, eight, six...
So the space you'd like to eliminate is the parallel behind the building and that one space on Rogers, so you don't have the other spot?
Yeah, PS2. PS2 should be, you know, we, we have this corner over here, we have PS1 and 2, you're adding those? Add PS2, but leave, leave a strip of grass, a cut leaf in the back?
At the entrance, okay.
Yeah, over here, PS1, leave that grass on your new front. Put in the five. Get rid of those three, keep some grass in the backs. You get five spaces here, one, you get six extra spaces, and you're getting your exit, and you're getting grass for the neighborhood. I think that's pretty fair that, and make it look nice to a property, look nice.
Mr. and Mrs. Conley?
Sorry, I can't show you my...
Here's what I'm... Leave this grass, leave that grass, right? Hold on, let me figure out.
This is, this is Roger.
Okay, this is the back.
Yeah, so, so... There's big space there, now, right? So you still got one space there. You get two, three, four, five, you get six spots. Leave the grass in the back, leave the grass in the back. Add another space here. So you got one more space there, you get these five or six, and then you still got your exit too. They might end up with two spots here, leave a little grass, these are gone. One, two, three, four, five. But, but you got, leave some grass back here, you're still gonna have all those spaces, plus one, so you're gonna have 15 there, you have five there, that's 20. You're leaving these three and one of those, one of these, one here, okay?
Probably 21 spaces total.
Something like that. You leave, you're taking four, four pieces of them, right? One piece, two, three, four, and you're leaving that grass and a little corner grass, all it looks good. Like, you can go over here with one more almost, right here. In the corner, and you can use your exit, taking out all, you know what I mean?
Yep.
Anybody?
Yeah.
I mean, you still got grass, so they get some grass in the front of the building, they got grass on the side, they got grass in the back, between the bumpers on. And they still get their grass around, so they're gaining five, six spots. Or it's not, Baltimore, okay? Some grass back.
They get seven spots.
We have grass in both.
I know, I know.
I feel like that's like a nice candle.
Yeah, and we're gonna keep two grass there. And you got, you're gonna keep your grass here, but you got the hallway here, you can come back in and out now, right?
So you're just eliminating these three spaces?
And one of those.
So we'll have four?
And the rest, you got...
Senator, why would we eliminate these three?
Because we're not...
And then you still got your five, six, seven. You end up with seven spaces, all, instead of 11. Right? And we got a lot of grass out of it too. All right.
And it's important, just, I want to make clear with the board too, with respect to the remaining available space, the 1,775 square feet, they are, they are obviously gonna continue to market that space, you know, for a particular use. So the understanding here will have to be, that it's gonna be a retail or, or, or an office, or institutional as well, which is, which is likely certain. So I just want to make part of that, that part of the decision as well, that it's, that space will be available for either a retail or an office use as well.
Well, I say if you don't make the spaces what you want, and you come back here. You don't need it.
But that's why we're here this evening.
I know, it's just why I'm here.
Mr. Duka didn't want to tie the hands of the zoning board to come in just for that particular space. That's why we're here this evening.
But the difference is, you're taking it in place and you're just tarming the whole thing, the whole thing. So why, we do that to every visitor on, we get nothing, we get no grass, we get no nothing, council. Really, it's just not, I think it's fair to the neighborhood.
No, no, I think, I think, I think my clients are agreeable to leave the spaces, you know, remove those three spaces.
Are you also asking us to approve a future use?
Yes. Yeah, I don't want to have to come back here for, for an office or retail use. This is, this is the parking that we have. You know, so I'm, I'm requesting a relief this evening for that, that additional space as well at, at the direction of Mr. Duka. Because again, we, we met it, the colonies have met the parking requirement for Russian math in...
Um, I'm...
I would be named...
Can I go with whatever Lloyd, I think it's really...
Can I just have one thing? I'm not gonna write to someone who's gonna choke my business.
No, I know that, I know that.
So if it was someone who required it...
But we're also thinking about when you sell the building.
Exactly.
You sell the building.
You could sell the building, get this approved, sell the building, and then we don't know again. But that's the difference.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I would...
I don't think you'd have a problem, kind of, if you came back here and asked for it and we understand it's the same order, I mean, I don't think we'd have really a problem, huh? I don't think we would.
I mean, it's a, it's a...
Unless you ask them for a potty store.
It's a, it's a, it's a conforming, it's a conforming building. It is a conforming building.
But so that's what I understand. Your request was the parking spaces, and we're gonna give you parking spaces, but they also asked something additional now, like...
Yeah, I was requesting relief on the number of parking spaces for either a retail or office use for that remaining space. I don't want to have to come back here again.
See that here, you have to post your book existing parking, where the required setback.
The ordinance is, the ordinance is cited as well, with respect to the number, the number of spaces.
Is it used based on the square foot in the building? I did speak with, with Rob, and I was concerned that the void scheme would be handcuffed. There's somebody back after, go ahead.
No, app is...
Yeah. And, I mean, he'd probably have plenty anyway, if we let him pay them, we can try them off. But it's like... Shouldn't send them away? It should be a change.
Exactly, I think it should, whatever he puts in, he should have enough parking anyway, because you're gonna ruin another business if you don't. And four spaces is not gonna make a difference in making, breaking a business, I believe, depending on what it is. A potty store or something like that, I mean, like you say, you can't...
Potty store, twelve.
Oh, potty, you know, what do they sell on the street? There's like 50 cars every half hour.
They put stock the trucker, I wouldn't worry about it.
But my, my concern here is that this scanning may have served no purpose. You know, if we're not considering the, the additional availability.
Why are you here, council?
That's why I'm here.
You're here to get five extra spaces, you've got seven extra spaces, you think that would be good?
But I'm, I'm here to avoid having to come back to this board if, if Mr. Conley finds a...
I don't mind you coming back, but...
If, if Mr. Conley finds a tenant for that space, they should be able to rent it without having to come back to this board for people, this one up in this one side.
I don't agree, council. I think you get five parking spaces, seven more. If that don't do the business that belongs there, that business don't belong here, the way zoning is, real planning system is first, so... All right, we heard, we... Anything else, council? I, I hear what you said, I know what I've said, so I guess we're at an end fast. Is there anyone here that wants to speak in favor? Speak in favor, first call, second call, third call, fourth call, corresponds. Over here. Let it hit the DPW. Case number Z-1779, we have a really above reference project and I have comments I was following, especially how much impervious area will be increased from the wall. Explain how the surface runoff will be discharged and treated. Provide dimensions and grades for the new paving here. Is there anything else, please advise? Also, in the decision, with the addition of the paving, if they need to run off the system in that property, I don't know, maybe they can do it.
Just incorporate it?
Well, uh, but it's, it's not much yet, whatever they're gonna discover, be okay with it? Is there anyone opposed to what I said?
I just got one quick question, please.
Go ahead.
John Roseville, 62 Grand Mall Road. How many parking places do they currently have there?
14.
And so they, they adding more, is the only parking behind the building?
Correct.
So they're adding more parking behind the building?
To the side of the building.
One, two on the side, really, four on the side of the building, five on the side of the building, and one in the back.
It's kind of a show this here, so they thought we'll put parking there, it's right there?
Yeah.
On the side?
Anything else, John?
I'm, I, I just have to say that I'm, I'm against that.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else, last call, caller probably even close. Just incorporating the letter, you know what? We can't pave everything for everybody, you really can't, it's just, it's, it's just crazy what's happening. We're putting in houses and houses and houses where they shouldn't be, and packing everything in, and packing and everything, and everyone wants another space, and next thing you know, you can't even get articles in my name, you're gonna have nothing, nothing, asphalt city. I think they got a great deal of me voting for five of those, the way I wanted to know. They get seven more, okay, that's funny.
I'm a favorite, Eddie.
Comments?
Ah, yeah, concerns, if they, if there's something I use that comes up that needs more packing, I suggest you do that. And especially not, not for the current, but could be the future, always chopping up, whatever, you know, that's, that's what we think about. Could I, I just, I have one question.
Sure.
How many, how many people in the class at the school?
There's an average of six to eight students.
Okay.
Each class.
All right.
Yeah, they're all in totally small rooms.
Okay.
In that space.
All right.
And again, they, and they are, all the classes are staggered.
And they don't.
When they start and when they, you know.
And they don't park there.
And they don't park there, yeah, yeah, but when parents come back, the classes are staggered, as a fashion, we don't have that.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Do you have any?
I agree on the seven places, and I also agree that additional business goes in there, they should come back.
They don't have enough. Who are you now?
What'd you guess?
Have a lovely.
In matter of Z seventeen seventy-nine, Mr. Chairman, Robert Conley, manager, one seventy-six Willard Street LLC, for a variance to move the existing parking, and create additional parking on the premise number one seventy-six Willard Street, I take motion to grant the variance, incorporating the items in the letter from DPW, and making those seven additional spaces, and Mr. Duca can help in a grievance negotiation.
All right, second?
I have a second.
On the motion, CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so then, thank you, Senator. Judy Chen, Judy Chen.
Mr. Chairman, I reached out to the attorney, there was a bit of disconnect, he wasn't aware, he asked if he could continue to, oh, this twenty seconds.
Sure.
Is that Jack?
Jack, ah, Jack made a mistake.
Well, you know, I don't know who made the mistake, and I, I said he was, he was Jack.
I think most of all this one second.
Second, on the motion, CNN, all in favor?
Most of the jury.
Second, all in favor? Pours them all. Thank you, John.